Dusty, would you enable the video portion of people signing in? It says it stopped by you. Hello, everyone. You should be able to start your video now. There we go. Hi. Success. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Okay, it would help if I turned up my sound and I could hear you all. There you go. Okay, so can everyone hear me all right? Thank you.
So the meeting is not turned on live yet. So if you want to talk logistics for the question.
Actually, I was thinking I would talk about when everybody was on. So.
Okay.
All right. Just do that.
Okay. You guys received the updated questions today and did you get the packet information? You were missing the one application you were missing.
Yes, I did. Thanks. That was real odd. All that was there is a signature.
Yeah, I don't know what that was. I think we checked with Cecil today and said maybe it was an upgrade. Maybe you need an upgrade.
Yeah, I just haven't had a chance to dive into it.
Okay. Let us know if I can help you.
Andrea sent me a scanned copy of the application, so I've got it now.
Okay, okay.
Hello.
Hello.
So do we know if Councilmember Lopez is going to be able to join us?
He has confirmed. I can text him real quick and see where he's at. We don't have our first attendee online yet either, or first interviewee.
That's good. Then that'll give us a chance to do the orientation anyway. But the orientation was primarily for Councilmember Lopez. There he is.
There we go.
Councilmember Lopez, okay. So, welcome, everyone, and this is.
Hold on one second.
Yep.
Let me connect us live first.
Please, thank you.
One second. Okay, we're live. You ready?
Thank you very much. Welcome. This is a special meeting of the Campbell City Council on Monday, August 30th at 5:30 PM. I call this order to, I call to order the special meeting of the city council for the purposes of conducting via telecommunications and compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and executive order N 2920 as issued by the governor for the purpose of having a meeting to interview candidates for the Campbell Planning Commission. This is also being live streamed on Channel 26, the city's webpage, and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bybee. President. Councilwoman Landry.
President.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Here.
Mayor Gibbons.
Here, thank you very much. And for the benefit of those on our council who haven't participated in this process before, just a few orientation comments. So what we typically do is we have a list of questions and each of us will pick a question that we would like to ask all of the candidates during the first round. And on the second round, you may have a follow-up question to your own question or anything related to us via the applicant's form. And then we usually conclude with an opportunity for each applicant to ask their questions, anything that they would like to know from us. And we have four candidates for three positions. And I know that some of the candidates reached out to council members. I'll just begin by saying that I did not speak to any of the applicants. If anyone else would like to say anything about that, they're more than welcome to do so now.
I was reached out to by one candidate, but I didn't talk to them.
And I spoke briefly with Matt Kim Carr, I think it is.
No one reached out.
Okay.
No one reached out to me either.
Okay.
All right, so thank you for that. And would each of you like to pick a question? Who would like question number one? Who would like question number two?
I'll do two.
Thank you. Three?
I can take three.
Okay, so two is Ann, three is Sergio. Four?
I'll take four.
Paul?
I guess I'll take five, but to be honest, for the three incumbents, I prefer to go off the board here.
I know it's a little bit weird.
Well, no, I always ask the incumbent to say, I'd like to know kind of what's their experience, what works and what doesn't. But for the non-incumbent, I'll take five, if that's okay.
Okay, I think that's acceptable because they were all related. Okay, and then I'm working two computers and the mouse doesn't work on the second one. And I will ask number six, but I will ask for a more detail than what was in their application or for the existing, what they think they've contributed to making Campbell anything change, related to change.
Yes, our first candidate, Maggie.
Okay, is available? Okay.
She's long line with us now.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. So change. And difference. Okay, thank you very much. Hello, Maggie, welcome. Nice to see you, even virtually.
Hi, Mayor Gibbons. Nice to see everybody as well.
Good. All right, I think we can all hear each other. And what we're going to do, Maggie, is the process is similar to what you've been through before, which is we will do two rounds of questions. The first one is the same question, basically, to all the applicants. And the second question is a follow-up that council members would like to ask. And then we'd love to have you provide some questions or comments back to us. With that, that would be great. And we're going to begin with Ann, Councilmember Bybee, would you like to begin with your question?
Maggie, what do you think is needed to be successful as a commissioner?
So if I heard the question correctly, you're asking what qualities?
Well, what particular key skill is needed to be an effective planning commissioner? And if you can, it can be one or more than one.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great question. So it's been almost four years that I've been on the Planning Commission. And before that, I was heavily involved with the Campbell Village area plan that we worked on together. So I think there's a lot of different aspects to being an effective planning commissioner. I think, you know, you really have to invest the time and put in your due diligence to reading the packet, visiting the sites, making sure you understand the issue, speaking with the planner and the director when questions come up. I also think, you know, you have to take the whole kind of picture in mind. There's a lot of things that's changing in terms of our community and our environment. And you have to look at kind of how things are evolving, taking a look at, you know, what's happened in the past, the history of Campbell and where we came from, but then taking a look at where we want to go in the future and how we want to evolve and how, you know, what the next gen, what we want Campbell to look like for the next generation.
Thank you. Thank you. Next question is from, let's see, that was Sergio. Your question next?
Thank you. Hi, Maggie. My question is that the role of the planning commissioner is to evaluate land use applications using the adopted policies of the city, including the general plan zoning ordinance and any applicable area plans. Are you familiar with any of these policies and how do you carry out that responsibility if you find that you personally disagree with the land use policy or if members of the public argue against them?
Yeah, so you know, the the planners do a really nice job of laying out kind of the relevant land use policies and aspects of the general plan to help us and inform us what parts of the plan we should consider when making decisions. In particular, you know, there's various area plans. There's the Winchester area plan. There's the Santa Moss area plan. There's the Campbell Village neighborhood plan that kind of highlights specific aspects to each of those regions in addition to the general plan. So it's important to use those as a template or a framework when making decisions that come up before us.
Thank you. And the next question is by Susan.
Thank you. Hi, Maggie.
Hello.
The city is mandated by the state to provide its fair share of housing in the region. Given that the city is primarily built out, how do you see the city meeting its housing goals and growing responsibly over the next five to 10 years and still maintaining our small-town character of the community?
That is a great question, Councilwoman Landry. And it's also a bit of a complicated question because while, you know, I think all of our community members really value the small-town feel that we have as part of Campbell. We know that there is a huge housing shortage and we are required to add housing. So I think that, you know, this is always a decision that gets made together within the Planning Commission and the city council. But I think me personally, I think one area where we have to grow and develop is around areas where we have access to alternative transportation, whether that's light rail or bus or biking routes within the city. And we're going to have to add density in those areas. But I think we can also get very creative, you know. I was really happy to be part of the process for adding specific ADU ordinance so we could add ADUs, no matter what the particular lot size was. So that was, that was a big step, I mean, a small but big step forward relative to where we were. And, you know, we're just going to have to think about areas where it really makes sense around jobs and places like that to increase density. I also think, you know, with changes happening, this is what I was alluding to a little bit earlier, but, you know, there are kind of these broad changes happening within the country. One of them right now we're seeing is the fact that, you know, working remotely is a major change that's happened for many people over the last year and a half because of COVID. And many large companies are really looking at their return-to-work plans and and part of that will just be more permanent or semi-permanent, working from home rather than coming into offices. So there may be opportunities for also, you know, looking at moving office space designations to more residential spaces.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Thank you. Hey, Maggie.
Hello.
Thanks for wanting to re-up, first of all, and thanks for, you know, four years gone by pretty quickly.
Sure did.
My question is, you've been there four years, so I always look for feedback. What's working, what's not working in the commission? And how would we make it better? And that could be for the city, for the commissioners, or for the public and the applicants?
Yeah, you know, that's a great question. I think there are some some areas in the code that are a little bit historical. And I think, you know, we could streamline the process for the community, the applicant, the planning commission and the staff. Obviously, the, you know, resources are limited and every every application that comes before us takes a lot of staff time to put together and then our time to review. So I think as we work through the update to the general plan, we'll want to look at some of those areas and make sure that, you know, those particular areas, we can streamline them so that we're not spending, so that we're spending the staff's time and the community's time most efficiently. And, you know, we've talked about quite a bit of those in the throughout our meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. So you filled out your form a few years ago. I don't know if you've had a chance to think about it or not, but we asked the question, you know, what is it about Campbell that makes it special? And I would ask, what do you think has been your most significant contribution? What do you think that you've really helped in the decision-making process while you've been on the Planning Commission? Yeah, how do you think you fit in and how has that done, worked?
Hmm, that's a great question. I'll have to think about that for a little bit.
Yeah, you came in with just exactly what you said. You referenced your experience with the Campbell Village process and then became engaged in the Planning Commission. And so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that was the first thing that came to mind, actually, when you asked the question was, you know, I was heavily involved with the development of the Campbell Village neighborhood plan and really working with the director at that time and also the community. Through that process, I really had, I gained an understanding that there are different points of view and those different points of view are very valuable. And so the kind of, that's, that's what I take with me to the Planning Commission when I look at the different applications that come before us is really trying to understand objectively the issue, the considerations, how it's going to impact, how the decisions are going to impact Campbell going forward. And so, you know, I I guess I would consider myself, you know, a moderate when it comes to decision-making and that, you know, there are sort of taking a middle ground when it comes to how we want to, you know, preserve a lot of the past and what we have, but also move Campbell into the future.
Okay, thank you. So we'll do a second round of follow-up questions and Councilmember Bybee.
I don't have any follow-up.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Landry?
Nope, answered all the questions.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
You know, I'll ask you one. So are there any specific types of projects maybe that you think should be coming through that maybe aren't bringing through? Or things that, maybe things that have come through that maybe we shouldn't be bringing? Some advice on where we're going? Kind of open.
Yeah, I mean, so specifically, we talk, a lot of the kind of areas that we look at are related to whether we want to approve a particular application. And usually we get a little bit hung up on the parking issue because we do have very well, let's see. You know, the parking requirements have been there for a while and, you know, things are quite different now when it comes to, like I said before, A, people, you know, if we're talking about we're talking about businesses coming to work. But also, you know, economies are much more efficient than they were. So, you know, a doctor's appointment that may have taken a half an hour might only take 10 minutes. So the requirement for how many parking stalls are required for a particular application, you know, that's an area where we really have to take a look because it's you know, we consider it very carefully. We always have a discussion, but I think we can look at that area more broadly and try to. Um, reframe our requirements around parking.
Okay, thank you.
So my question has to do with. Sort of a follow-up, uh, slightly different. The. Planning Commission is basically responsible for implementing the general plan and ordinances. And um, there's a lot of discussion about businesses and supporting businesses. How do you balance? The. Rules and regulations versus. Businesses, you know? You know, some businesses come in and say, you have to help me because um, I want to have my business in Campbell, that kind of question.
Yeah, so, you know. You're, uh, I completely agree that. Our decisions are based on the general plan and around the ordinances. Um, but there. Um, there are areas that are subject. To interpretation, and that's really. You know, where we come in in terms of having the discussions around. How those particular business-related applications um get in with the community. So. You know, we want to make sure that we're supporting. Businesses in Campbell, that's one of our. Priorities, you know, in the discussions that we've had, I would say that. All of the planning um commissioners want to make sure that we are. That our interpretations of the general plan and the ordinances are, are not. Um, restricting businesses. Um, from being able to efficiently operate in Campbell.
Right, thank you. And do you have anything that you'd like to ask us?
Mayor, I, I do have a follow-up question if, if I can ask.
Okay, we're running uh fast our time, so.
That's okay, I, I can, I can.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
She's trying to tell me to be brief in my answer.
Well, uh, briefly then, um, wha- what can you say about the um relationship with the Planning Commission, the City Council and? You know, are there ways that, that we could be doing better, or do you see that working smoothly over the course of your term?
You know, I've, I've seen it um, working smoothly in, in my view. Um, I would say at times, you know, we don't always come to the same decisions. But to me, that's part of the democratic process, and, and I think that's exactly how it should work.
Thank you, and anything you would like to ask us?
Um, well, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's been an incredible experience over the last almost four years being on the Planning Commission. So I would, uh, I'd love to be reappointed for the next four years and, um. You know, I've, uh. I've enjoyed, I think, working with um all. Of you folks closely. Um, other than uh Councilmember Bybee and Councilmember Lopez. Which, so I'm sure over the next four years we'll have more of an opportunity to work together, but. I love Campbell, um, I love the community, um, I really love what we're doing together. And it's been really rewarding um to be part of shaping that.
Thank you, appreciate that, and I think you also know that there are four applicants for three positions. And the council will announce the decision at the next council meeting.
Fantastic.
Great, thanks Maggie, thanks for everything.
Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Okay. And Madam City Clerk, we can go to the next applicant. Uh, next is Nick, Mr. Nick Colville, but he is not online with us yet. He is not, okay, then is there anyone else online?
No, uh, we staggered them all 20 minutes apart, right?
So.
I, I have a, a point of clarification.
Yes, please.
Um, we, we have the ability to make the decision tonight, this is a special meeting, so.
Yes. So. But traditional, but tr- traditionally, we haven't announced it until the pla- the actual council meeting. We, um, I have no objections to changing that, but that's traditionally what we've done.
We also didn't before, right, so we're gonna.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We didn't stream these meetings before, even if in the tent, it wasn't available. Essentially, we've had this issue, we're gonna know.
Fair comment, fair comment. So are we making the decision and announcing tonight, or would you like me to put a staff report on for September? Well, we should have a staff report to make it public.
Right.
But given that a council, a Vice Mayor Resnikov is correct, the decision will be made tonight and it is uh being uh live broadcast, so. Um, we can make the announcement tonight, but it should still be on the agenda.
We've always formally done that at the next meeting, right?
Okay.
In this case, it won't be hidden.
Okay, alright. The new world of getting used to unintended consequences.
Um, so Mr. Colville is not with us yet, he was scheduled for the 5:50 time slot. Um, next, after that is Mr. Cray, who isn't scheduled until 6:10, so we might have a couple of minutes.
Okay, so, um. We can leave this time slot open um for. Uh, Nick, um, and we'll leave it up to him to um, see how much time, does anyone wish to uh? Extend additional time to him and relocate him after the um 6:30 appointment? Or would we just give him the time that he has and whatever time is here when he's here?
Prefer to keep the time that and schedule that we have.
Okay.
Agree.
He had the schedule ahead of time, he knew.
Okay. So hopefully he's not someplace on the East Coast under a hurricane watch. Councilmember Bybee, your hand is up. I'm gonna have to figure out how to cue hold music for these moments. So Cecil's not online with us, he usually does our background music. I'm gonna have to work on it. All I care about is somebody besides me is controlling it. Just a few more minutes till the next appointment time, sorry. Best laid plans of mice and men, right? Happens what happens? I'm gonna have to look up where that phrase comes from, is it Shakespeare or Steinbeck or somebody else?
I think it's Steinbeck. Now, which Steinbeck, I don't know, but.
The answer is. It is adapted from a line in. To a Mouse by Robert Burns. No matter how carefully a project is planned, something may still go wrong with it.
Not Steinbeck. Has our next person queued up yet?
Not yet. Uh, they still have a couple more minutes to log on, we tried to stress not to log on till their, their appointment time so that it wouldn't interfere with another interviewee. Because in this Zoom webinar platform, the waiting room function in Zoom is not, does not operate the way it does in a normal meeting setting because we use the webinar platform. So, there's, the, it's a slight difference in the way the technology works, so we've asked them to sign on right at their appointment time so they didn't. You know, interrupt another. Interviewee.
So lesson learned, maybe we shouldn't use the webinar function, maybe we should use the regular Zoom function.
Well, the webinar function allows us to do all of the live streaming. So there's, there's some. Challenges with using just a regular. challenges with using just a regular meeting platform where we need we needed to be able to livestream the public meetings. So.
Interesting. Thank you. I repeat, we have to keep on learning.
And right when we do, things will change again.
Okay, Mr. Gray has joined us.
Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Hello, City Council.
Yes. Well, welcome this evening, and we are going to be asking questions in two rounds. The first will be general questions that we're asking of each applicant, and then we followed up with basically any question that makes sense, given your answers or your responses to your form. And then ideally, you'll have a chance to ask us some questions or give us some feedback from your experiences. And so, welcome. Thank you for applying. Thank you for everything you've done on the Planning Commission, and we will begin with Councilmember Bybee.
Michael. The first question is, what do you think is a key skill that is needed to be successful as a planning commissioner?
Well, I'll tell you, I sure had an experience, education these last four years, which which does help. I yeah, I don't know the key. Yeah, you know, it just kind of be open, be open, be a good listener. I guess there's two. I guess that's two. Be open to all sides and be a good listener. I think those are two.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Michael. My question is, the role of the planning commissioner is to evaluate land use applications using the adopted policies of the city, including the general plan, zoning ordinance, and any applicable area plans. Are you familiar with these policies? And how would you carry out your responsibility if you find that you personally disagree with the land use policy or that members of the public argue against them?
You know, I so well, to specifically answer the question, you know, I definitely do a lot of research. I do a lot of homework. So I've read a lot of the stuff. And, you know, I've always I've been surprised, and I know how it's got to be written, and how at the level of subjectivity in all of this, even with the general plan and the zoning code. So yeah, I haven't. I'm trying to think if there's ever been a change, you know, a situation where I just didn't agree with the with the general plan or the zoning codes. And yet it does happen because they are a little outdated in some respects. I know that has come up. And I think that we just as me specifically, you're asking me specifically, not the commission in general, but I think me as a commissioner and our commission in general, you know, kind of tries to go through these things, you know, pretty closely and hash them out and try to. You know, that's the thing about the subjectivity is you're all kind of limited or relegated or creatures of our own experience. So you know, I think that 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 plays a role. You kind of have your own life's experience. It kind of helps. So there have been a few, you know, cases of minor disagreements with the code or the general plan. Not really anything too major that I can think of, but yeah, I think I'm pretty familiar with it and and it has been a learning. It's been a four-year learning experience. So I'm hundred times more familiar with it now than I was four years ago. Put it that way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry.
Yes, hi, Michael. The city is mandated by the state to provide its fair share of housing in the region. Given that the city is primarily built out, how do you see the city meeting its housing goals and growing responsibly over the next five to 10 years and still maintaining the small town character of the community?
Well, there's that's the 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 number one issue for you guys. Good luck with you guys is what I could say to that. But me guys, I think I've been on the record. I think I've been I've been pretty clear on this. What I I guess for every planning commissioner, housing is near and dear. We want to keep our our small town feel. Campbell's such a great city, really, but I I guess one way I would answer that is when the when the general plan update came out, the proposed update, the most recent update for the general plan, I was I was you know, really, I was really surprised, completely surprised that there that that plan didn't designate more areas for higher density, for higher residential density. I was thinking that there would be areas of Hamilton Avenue, Campbell Avenue. There were some areas of Winchester and 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 Baskin, but I was surprised there wasn't a little more because again, you know, and I think we all know this, our density has to go up. I think it I think we can do this strategically and planning wise. So the impact on the city is is not too bad. I will say this because it's come up with a couple, you know, I've got four years' experience, so that helps me talk to you guys on this one. A lot of people, citizens who are giving input to us, and there and a lot of them, a fair number of them are saying, you know, it's not the Campbell it was before, and I think the quality has gone down. And what they're meaning, you know, 90% of the time is the density is increasing. Traffic, homeless, like, it's kind of all kind of goes together. So, you know, so that's the challenge to, you know, try to maintain our our unique qualities of Campbell, but we're in the middle of one of the biggest urban areas in the country, in the world. And we need housing desperately. I am totally on board with the need for more housing, and I'm especially on board with the need for more below-market rate housing. So I don't know if I answered your question, Councilwoman Landry. I know that that's that's the issue, and I it's it's a tough one. It's a tough one. I think we do have to go up, and we have to go higher density in strategic locations. More more than we have so far indicated we're doing, I think. So it's my two cents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Thank you. Hi, Michael. Thank you for reapplying. Appreciate it. Four years has gone by pretty quickly, right? My question is always the same to incumbents. So given your four years, your experience, what what do you think is working and what's not working on the on the commission? And how would we might we do things better that improve the service? And that could be service for the commissioners, for the city, for the public or applicants, kind of openly?
Yeah, I well, I guess, yeah, okay, a lot of a lot of I have a lot of answers to that one. So I want to be as concise as I can. So the Zoom meetings have been a problem. People don't know how to participate and get in on that. And we have really, I don't think, I mean, in terms of the commissioners, we did a good job of saying how we're doing it and doing it. But I think the public has been very confused on it. A, I think B is, like, as I mentioned, the level of subjectivity in our decisions was a lot higher than I expected, or at least high, maybe not a lot, but higher than I expected. And I think that our efforts right now to go to the the more objective standards is really is is a great way to go. I think that I have I've often made decisions really wishing I always feeling I I wish I knew more about certain things, and I'm not I'm not blaming our staff is great. The planning staff is really wonderful. But I like I'd like to know the city's economic, the city's economic impact on some of these decisions we're making. I think that that's I think that that's applicable for the planning commissioners to know. And often it's there was we had a report, I forget what the I wish I wish I knew the item that would make make a better example, but there was a report on some kind of major item we had in the last couple of months. And it did have a section about the economic impact and which caught my eye because I don't know if I'd ever seen that in any previous report, and I'm talking three plus years. And then the other issue that really was a toughie for me, and it goes back to my early years when I was a little more naive about stuff. And so we had a big, as you know, the I forget the name of the developer, and the council did approve it eventually, a big, major development on Dell Avenue, right in the corner by Dell and Knowles, right next to the border with Los Gatos. And so we start talking about this, and it's really a tough issue. And, you know, it's it's bigger than zoned right now, blah, blah, blah. And and then I find out that there was supposed to, or there was a Dell Avenue plan that the city had worked on for years and years. And and so I'm trying to figure out what happened with that. Well, it just couldn't city couldn't pass one. So the so the Otis of you know, a multi-year effort to create a Dell Avenue plan really fell on on the planning commissioners, which was especially tougher for the newer ones, which was me and, you know, a couple of others then. So I I thought that that was kind of a weird way to go about it. And, you know, it's so it's just kind of it's kind of passing the buck, and it's kind of, you know, planning on the fly sort of a thing. So I thought that that I thought that that was a mistake. I think in retrospect, probably this, maybe the council, maybe the city in general would agree that it would have been better to have come to grips with that Dell Avenue plan, which would have made that particular project so much easier. Now, having said that, we have we've had no other projects proposals since then on Dell Avenue. So maybe it wasn't as big a deal as I thought. And then the final thing would be just this came up with the In-N-Out, which was the maybe the most controversial item in my four years, but what I was surprised about, and I know, and this is, and I don't know the city's role, but I was happy to see that the Hamilton Avenue off-ramp is scheduled to be widened. I was really surprised at the fact that nobody knew when the heck that was going to happen. And apparently, nobody from Campbell had been trying to grease the wheels to have that happen sooner rather than later. So I'm sure that the transit people are not going to put Campbell high on their list when we're not making the noise that maybe some of the other cities are making for their improvement. So it's a lot. It's a big answer there, but.
It's a good. It's good. And I'll just comment a couple of those things, though, and V and the VTA off-ramp, the Caltrans, Caltrans off-ramp in particular are not something to cover. The mayor agreed in this length of conversation. They're very valid points for a lengthier. There's a lot of background to those issues, I would just say. They're very valid points. We don't control a lot of things, but I'll leave it at that. I think those are good points. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would offer, there's a lot of background on the Dells that you don't know. We need wine time. So my question is also related to a lot what the question from Council Vice Mayor Resnikov and your experience being on the Planning Commission now. You're an old salt, and you've sort of talked about it, but I'd like to see if you could be a little bit more direct in saying, what have you learned? What have you contributed? And how would you change things?
Well, I think with at some point a couple of years ago, and I and I think it's a it's a good thing that we should do. And I know we brought it up to the city council that there really should be at least one meeting a year, joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the city council with the sole agenda being really the city council kind of telling the planning commission kind of what they've been doing. And, you know, how they see things going and stuff that could help our mindset, I think, as a planning commission. You know, one thing I this this sounds logical, and I, you know, I'll be honest with you, I never would have applied for this if I wasn't retired. I if I'm working with young kids, I don't know how those how those folks do it. God bless them, but which leads me to my point that originally I was not looking at the city council videos, the replays of the meetings or the live meetings. And now I am. I've gone, I've I never miss. I never miss a video of your meetings. That's just in the last couple of years, and that's helped. That's helped. It's helped me with my trying to organize my mind on some of these issues, which which are really tough. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how to answer your question, Mayor Gibbons. Yeah, I I don't know what I would do differently. But I would have that meeting at least every year. That should be a regular thing forever. Go starting from here on out, and I think it could be valuable for the Planning Commission because we do get a lot of stuff that's really, really tough and and I've been I've been torn on so many. A lot of votes are really close for me. I'm really close. I'm really kind of torn. And along that line, and some advice worth the commissioners gave me early on, and I'm glad they did. I I am. So I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna vote what I think is best. So and I'm not necessarily going to bend over, you know, too far for, you know, to get a unanimous vote, I guess. And it hasn't happened too often, but I've been a sole usually no, I guess. I don't know why, but usually a no sole no vote, not too often, once or twice. And you know, I used to think that that's bad. You know, you really should, you know, let's work it out. Let's compromise. And of course, we do that to a large extent, but I, yeah, you know, I'm not a I'm gonna I'm gonna vote as I do believe is the right way to do it. Have never gotten have never not gotten along with any of my planning fellow planning commissioners or city planners. Everybody is so cordial and nice, and it's it's really a good group. I've been really impressed with the commissioners and and with the staff. I really have, and not just the planning staff, but with the whole staff. So I tried one, I guess, one other thing I would that I think there should be a mechanism. We have we make a lot of votes at the Planning Commission. We're at we do a lot of votes. I actually wrote this down so I wouldn't forget this. And we kind of ask for this to be done kind of an ad hoc basis, and it would be nice. It should really be kind of standard. And one is, we're always asking for more bicycle parking at the on the commercial sites. And that should just be standard. The other thing is, we often ask about, you know, is there for new residential projects, is there solar? Will there be solar energy provisions? And I know the state was, I think, mandating that. I don't know where that's ever gone. I actually I would have expected that to be mandated, you know, three and a half years ago, and I think it still hasn't been mandated, but some of that stuff, you know, comes up on a head hoc basis that should just be kind of a standard. This is always the case kind of a thing. And then the the parking was the other. And the parking, well, that's that's a big issue. I won't get into parking, but that's another one that we, you know, it's it seems like the city of Campbell's requirements on parking are a lot more strict than the than the general state or that 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 traffic group, traffic engineering group, I forget that set standards. I think there's a little more lenient than I think we can be a little more lenient at times. Anyway.
Thank you so much. And we have utilized our time, but I think you have expressed and answered our questions very thoughtfully. And unless there's any other urgent question, I think we're all set. So thank you, Michael.
Thanks, everybody. I really do wish you all the best. I know you got a tough job, really doing a good job out there, but keep on keep on trucking.
So we have four applicants for the three positions. We will be making a decision tonight, and as this is a live broadcast, the decision will be known tonight, and it will be announced at their next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, our last interviewee, Mr. Kamkar, is with us. Would you like, are you ready for me to?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Here we are. Welcome, Matt Kamkar. And we'll see you with an audio and visual in just a moment. I have no doubt. Okay, and Matt, you can. Okay. And Matt, you can unmute yourself.
Is this, is this working?
Yes, we, we don't, oh, there you go. There's your picture. Hello. Nice to see you again. How have you been?
I'm doing great. Thank you. Nice to see you, Mayor Gibbons.
Good, good. Well, welcome this evening. And we're going to, uh, follow the process, uh, as time allows. We'll do two rounds of questions. One standard question that we typically ask all the applicants and then a follow-up question. And hopefully you'll have time to ask us some questions as well towards the end. So we will begin with the first question from council member Bybee.
Hi, Matt. Welcome.
Hi.
What do you think is a key skill needed to be successful as a planning commissioner?
Uh, I think you have to be a good listener. I think you need to understand. Um, you have to understand how many sides there are to an issue and understands their perspective. Um, once you do that, then your knowledge, your research, your intellect then should be able to guide you, you know, uh, as to how you would proceed.
Okay, thank you.
A second question is from council member Lopez.
Thank you. Hi, Matt. My question, um, is um, the role of the planning commissioner is to value, evaluate land use applications using the adopted policies of the city, including the general plan, zoning ordinance and any applicable area plans. Are you familiar with any of these policies? And how would you carry out your responsibility if you find that you personally disagree with a land use policy? Or if members of the public argue against them?
Okay, I am familiar with them as I have written in my application. I am a previous, uh, planning commissioner with the city of San Jose when I used to live there. Uh, I was a planning commissioner for eight years. Um, and, um, so, uh, you know, I have my, uh, guiding principles. I have general plan to go with, you know, with, with the decisions we made at, in San Jose may not be applicable to Campbell. Campbell is a small town field which we all want to keep, you know, and so, uh, we have our guiding principles and then we have, um, you know, what is best for our particular community, you know, and so I would use the general plan guidelines, you know, I also was on the general plan task force update 2044 San Jose. So I got a feel for how you go about changing some of those plans based on the studies that experts do and they give you the data, the professional staff that are much more, in my opinion, qualified, you know, to come up with the data and are so-called art data scientists. And then based on those data is what, is what, you know, I would vote for. And, um, again, if there's a tons of people in the, in the, um, in the, uh, audience and, uh, I, I, I listen to them and the ones that make sense and bring a valid point, you know, great. Uh, and if they don't, you know, I, I still respect them, you know, as they took their time to come and let us know, but maybe not, um, count as much on their testimony as I will. The ones that makes, makes sense to me.
Thank you. And, uh, councilwoman Landry?
Yes. Hi, Matt. Thank you.
Hello.
The city is mandated by the state to provide its fair share of housing in the region. Given that the city is primarily built out, how do you see the city meeting its housing goals and growing responsibly over the next five to 10 years and still maintaining the small town character of the community?
Wow, that's a, that's a very good question. It's certainly not an easy to, easy one to answer. Um, but, uh, first of all, we should do our best to provide as much housing as it makes sense. Uh, to me, ADUs are, you know, they're a pretty good start, you know, as far as um, providing housing, um, uh, housing opportunities for people. Um, and also densifying, you know, densifying where it makes sense. For example, um, along corridors, Bascom Winchester, you know, uh, heavy traffic corridors is when, where density would make more sense to me because they're, they have more access to mass transit as well. Smack in the center of the neighborhood where, um, they may not have access to much transit or, you know, other types of, by the ship, you know, it would not make too much sense. So, um, places where are conducive to higher density, I will, you know, I think it would make sense for us to do. Um, and along with that, one thing that I kept thinking is maybe, maybe a little bit higher bedroom count. Bedroom can house people, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be all brand or unit, which has a lot of, um, uh, I guess, uh, uh, obstacles that you have to go through to get those, but maybe, maybe, uh, uh, be a little bit more open to higher bedroom count within the units. I think that's one way to also. Uh, and I know that Reno doesn't count, um, the bedrooms, they only count the units, but maybe that needs to be re-looked, uh, looked at and considered, um, you know, why not consider additional bedrooms as housing opportunities?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and then we have Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Thank you. Matt, thank you for, um, reapplying. Appreciate the, the continued interest. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Question is, you just touched a little bit on it, but are there any specific projects or maybe policy changes in Campbell that you think uh, might be appropriate for the city? For example, you just talked about, interesting enough, bedrooms versus housing units, but either development projects or other ideas like that, that we might be able to implement?
Well, of course, you know, I mean, my whole training, you know, as, uh, has been as a civil engineer, so we deal with developments day in and day out, you know, um, I work with architect and landscape architects, you know, when we design projects and so a lot of thought goes into these developments, you know, and the same smart people that create these designs, you know, can tackle the problem. We just have to make it a little bit easier, you know, um, I don't want to go off topic, but a friend of mine, um, runs this, uh, runs this equality center and, you know, tries to help, you know, women and children, you know, in the community. And she all of a sudden said, if anybody wants to help the, you know, people in Afghanistan, you know, just order something from Amazon, have it come to us, we will distribute it, you know. She made it easy for us to do. And I love that I immediately, you know, did my part, you know, because so it's, it's up to the council and the plan commissioner to make it easier for Silicon Valley innovators to come up with solutions, you know, for our, uh, for our community, you know, and so I like to be able to, as a problem solver, I like to be part of that, sort of, part of that solution.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank, yeah, thank you. So, Matt, my question's a little bit different, somewhat following on what Vice Mayor Resnikov asked you. Uh, but since you've been a planning commissioner elsewhere and, and familiar with the, the process and the general plan, um, how do you see yourself, you know, what have you learned about the role of a planning commissioner? And what have you specifically contributed, if you might be able to think of something at this short notice? Um, and how might you change the, the process? You've talked about what the city can do, but how might the process for a planning commissioner change? What, what, what would you suggest?
So, uh, so, you know, uh, when I was a planning commissioner, when I were a planning commissioner at the, at, in San Jose, our role was sort of two roles. One was, uh, semi-judicial, you know, where we would decide certain, um, items. And then the other one was just advisory to the city council. Of course, city council has always the last word on things when things get appealed. Um, as far as, um, what have I learned, what have I contributed? One of the things I've done is I've, I've tried to be as fair as I can. It doesn't matter if the applicant is, let's say was Google or the applicant was small business. I felt the same level of, um, respect and same level of, you know, opportunity and, um, uh, opportunity should be extended to someone who wants to make my community better. You know, and so, uh, and that's what I would like to, you know, bring to the, uh, the Campbell Plan Commission. Not that it's not, but that's something that I will, you know, be consistent in my deliberations, you know. Um, uh, as far as, um, how would I change things? Um, I'd probably make it a little bit more accessible. Um, you know, um, I know this, this Zoom is not very easy for a lot of people. I myself, you know, I had a little bit of trouble, um, uh, you know, um, getting on, but, uh, somehow, uh, making it more accessible and more reachable for the citizens, you know, to let us know how we're doing, whether good or bad, let us know so we can improve.
Thank you. And, um, if with that, we'll go back for a second round of kind of follow-up questions. Councilmember Bybee, do you have any extra, additional thoughts?
Yeah, I just have, uh, one question for Matt. Um, to what extent have you been involved in following, um, some of the city issues, um, that, that have been going on either at the planning commission level or city council level? Have you been watching Zooms or?
Uh, some, uh, somewhat, not, not as much as I, I used to because, um, uh, you know, I tried to get on planning commission for a few times, for a few, for probably two or three times and you know, I, you know, sort of got, got discouraged a little bit, but recently, you know, with the recent elections and everything, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, interested again. Um, one of the thing, one of the issues I was following was the In-N-Out burger coming to town, you know. And, um, I, I know that was very controversial and, um, you know, who wouldn't want an In-N-Out in their city with all the income and jobs they bring in, but if they pick the wrong site and they can't mitigate their impacts and they can't, um, uh, you know, and they end up being a negative, net negative rather than a net positive. You gotta put your foot down and say, I'm sorry, as much as we'd love to have you as a business, but just need a better site. We just need a better location, you know, um, and I understand their point of view. They need to be near freeways and near quick access to freeways, but you know, that particular site was just not the right one, you know, and so, um, you know, I can understand why it didn't, you know, it didn't go through, you know, IPM, you know. I don't know if I answered the question, but.
Yes, yes. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Lopez?
Uh, no follow-ups at this time. Thanks.
You? Councilwoman Landry?
Uh, no additional questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Done. Thank you.
Um, I'll ask one, which is, uh, again, um, if you're not comfortable answering it quite the way I'm phrasing it, uh, please, uh, let me know. Um, taking advantage of your previous, um, experience with, with the role of planning commission. How do you balance the general plan and the ordinances, the, the rules of that the planning commission follows with the, um, a business saying, you know, the business has one set of needs that may or may not come, uh, fit with the general plan and ordinances. How do you, how do you handle that?
Well, I think, uh, because the general plan is being updated, I can no longer say, uh, they didn't know 20, 30 years ago how our economy was going to be. At this time, the general plan, in my opinion, you know, its update is very familiar with the today's economy and the today's, you know, needs and, um, so I would say for the next five or 10 years, general plan, you know, knows what it's doing and and ordinances, you know, if they needed to be changed, they were changed. So I will stick with them. I would tell the business, you know, um, uh, we can't change for one person, you know, and, um, so uh, you know, uh, they are, they are swimming upstream, if you will, you know. Uh, now, if you had asked me this question, let's say five years ago, before general plan was gonna update, I probably would say, well, I would check to see how updated general plan is, you know, as was it, is it, does it apply to today's time, you know, for example, our Zoom and our, you know, um, uh, traffic, you know, could, is people, are people going to give up their cars, let's say, and take uh, mass transit, use Uber, um, bicycle? And so how important is to require every car to have a one or two-car garage, for example, you know? Because we are, um, where we are and general plan has been updated and has asked those questions, in my opinion. Um, I think general plan, you know, is the, uh, is the appropriate guiding light, if you will, you know, for me, you know, and um, so I'm not sure if I was as clear as I
Yeah.
wanted to be, but, you know, hopefully.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, uh, we do have a few minutes left. If you had anything that you'd like to ask us, any discussions, please feel free.
Um, I just want to say, I think, uh, the fact that the state has taken over the ADUs and, um, you know, um, makes uh, dictates to the cities how they have to treat an ADU. It means that, you know, this housing issue, um, is much more serious than sometimes we you know, we imagine, you know, and so by forcing all communities to accept the minimum standards for ADUs and add these ADUs, some places where ordinarily may not be appropriate tells us that, you know, um, we, we need to bring our, uh, we need to bring, you know, our thinking in line with the state. Otherwise, they probably do the same thing with single-family housing, you know, as you know, there's SB nine going through the Senate, you know, I mean, they're attempting to this, um, to art last single-family housing, you know, which I don't think they'll be successful, but the fact that they're trying is, is telling, you know, in, in, in my opinion, you know. And so I would say, um, I would say, you know, thank you for updating the general plan. Thank you for being an advocate of housing, you know, additional housing for the city, you know. I would love my kids to be able to buy in, in Campbell, you know, and not having to go elsewhere. So uh, thank you for everything that you guys are doing too.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from any council member. Thank you, Matt. And we will now adjourn to, um, discussion. And the council, uh, will make a decision, uh, tonight. And it will be formally announced at the next council meeting, which I think is, um, September 7th or 8th, whichever that Tuesday is.
September 7th.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Would everyone like to take a few minutes, uh, to, uh, make their notes or anything else before we begin discussion? Are you all set? All set?
I'm set.
Okay, good. All right. So, um, I would offer that, um, we, um, can make decisions this evening or make no decisions this evening. We have the flexibility of doing what we think is in the best interest of the city and the planning commission. So, um, with that in mind, um, there is some, uh, precedent for, um, reappointing planning commissioners who have served less than two terms. Again, there's no binding, um, rep, policy or procedure, um, but that has been done in the past. Um, Vice Mayor Resnikov, I'm just thinking of orientation questions, particularly for councilmember Lopez. Is there anything else that you suggest that we might, um, put out there as the beginning of the discussion?
No, I, I, in fact, some of what you just said, I was gonna include in my comments about some of the history of what we've done and also history with applicant. some of the history of what we've done and also history with applicants that have come back, so um if if you wanted, so I can start or
Yeah, go, I I will do that, but Councilmember Lopez, you have a question.
Yeah, I guess just being near the process, is it more of a uh discussion? Do we try to come out of consensus or or is there a vote? Um how's that typically done?
Oh, so um so a fair comment um in general, question in general. Um uh it's nice to hear what everyone has to say. And then we try and and based on what we've heard, we try and figure out where we stand. And we would typically, uh I would, in this case, begin with, do we have consensus on um a few applicants and um how, and then I'd go through and see if there's a consensus on those. We do try for a much uh a uh, what do you call it, unanimous decision? That doesn't always happen, but we do strive for that and have a dialogue to facilitate that if at all possible. Okay, and Vice Mayor Restnikov, you've offered to go first.
And let me add, if I could add to what you at times, we've looked at the incumbents first because it's sometimes easier to reappoint or is there interest in reappointing, but it doesn't have to be that way. But ultimately, we do a vote and the mayor's right. We're not always, we're not always um unanimous. We've had anywhere from unanimous to I'd even say contentious, but the majority vote rules and then we walk out and that's the way it is, so. But I think we've always kept the discussion going, or it was at least comfortable that you've had your say, and even if it's not in the majority, well, that's the way it is. But I think we we've taken as long as possible. So.
And and we can um leave a vacancy. We do not have to fill any or all of the positions.
We haven't, we did not fill. Yeah, we've done that.
We have, we have done that, so um that's also also something that you should feel comfortable indicating if that is your position of thought. So Vice Mayor Restnikov.
Okay, um so I'll reiterate something you said earlier. To to me, incumbents, when they've had one term or at least fewer than maybe six years, if there was a mixed term in their uh partial term, there needs to be a reason for me to not renew them. And and that has nothing to do with whether I agree with their decisions. Do they do, do they do a good job of thinking through things? And and there are times when some, I think the better commissioners we've had, I didn't agree with their their votes, but they were good commissioners. I- in this case, to me again, the two we had, Maggie and Michael, I think have done a good job. They spoke well. They had some good points. Um Michael brought up a couple of topics that would take hours to talk about, but but I I don't see a reason at all that I wouldn't vote to reappoint them. There there's no glaring reason to not. I'll leave it at that. Now, we can't consider somebody who didn't show. I mean, that's a problem. I feel bad because there may be a very valid reason you didn't make it, but that's not in front of me today. And we would even, if we wanted to consider that, we'd have to open the whole process again. So for me, Nick doesn't become a consideration because he didn't interview. So I would, I go to the third one. Let me comment on Matt. Matt has applied for this at least three times. Tell me, Mayor, maybe, maybe, may, well, and once, I think, if I'm not mistaken, for Parks and Rec, or or at least another commission.
Another commission.
I think this is the third one for planning. I give him a lot of credit for coming back. He said he got frustrated with coming back and showing interest. In the past, I remember when he came in the first time, we, two, two issues hurt him. We typically had a number of incumbents that were good, and also when he first came in, he had just moved into or back into Campbell and had a, I will call it a San Jose mindset. We had differences in what projects fit in the Campbell. I don't hear that now anymore. I looked at his application, he's six years down the road as being a resident. I got the impression now he's thinking more of what fits in this city than his particular votes for history in San Jose. I like that he keeps coming back. It's hard when you keep not getting a position. Um I thought his answers were much better this time. I'm interested in hearing what everybody else has to say, but but I'm I'm okay with him now, and in prior earlier votes, I wasn't. So um I'm I'm changing my mind on him. Subject, of course, I'm gonna hear what everybody else has to say, but I really don't see, separate from Matt, any issues with the two incumbents, so maybe we address them first. But I'm comfortable with Matt now, but let's let's have a good conversation now.
Thank you. Uh Councilwoman Landry, you'd like to go next?
Um yeah, I'll agree with Paul on the two incumbents. Um the four and a half years I've been doing this, we've said that if you have less than two terms, that there's no reason not to reappoint you. Uh they've not done anything drastically negative. Uh they have a good rapport with the other commissioners, so I would support the two existing commissioners being reappointed. Um I'm a little concerned about Matt. Uh he has applied several times. Um his answers are changing and there's more to the uh feeling like he belongs in Campbell now, where before he, I felt like he belonged in San Jose. So I'm interested to hear what others have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I I'm, I I I think I I really agree with um everything that the Vice Mayor said. Um I'm looking at the candidates and considering their qualifications, and it it's not whether I personally agree. In some cases, I I strongly disagree with uh things that were said, uh maybe to to uh, you know, some except for almost all of them, but um I think they're they're all qualified, the the ones that we've heard from. Um and and clearly, you can see the way their different minds work, the different perspectives they bring um that that I think would all add something. Absolutely zero issue with uh reappointing the the two incumbents. Um and and it's hard for me in particular with with um our our no-show, but I'm gonna agree with the Vice Mayor, particularly for me, because I haven't had the chance to um uh work with with that that commissioner and and in the past, so I um do 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 regret that. Um and and with Matt, again, there's things where, areas where I uh disagree, um but I I think the qualifications are there. Um I I think in particular, having been through the um the general plan update process, um that's gonna be valuable perspective now, given where we are in in our process. And um and and I do think that um he'll learn and um, you know, continue to grow in his perspective if he is appointed on the Planning Commission, but I think that also the incumbents that we heard from uh made it very clear that there was a lot that they learned in in their four years, and so um I see him as bringing a valuable perspective, and I'm sure he'll have uh some areas to uh uh grow in, but I think the basic qualifications are there for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bybee, Councilmember Bybee?
Well, I uh agree with pretty much what has been said. Um I support the reappointment of the two incumbents. I you know, the Planning Commission is the huge learning curve and um it, I, you know, four years, that they're just getting their feet wet, basically. And and um I think it helps to have that experience, you know, moving forward to another term. I think Michael um you know, Michael, right, um kind of alluded to that, that, you know, he he's learned a lot in the four years that he's been on and and is really having a a better, more of a comfortable level here. Um as far as Matt, um I wasn't involved in any previous interviews with him, but I liked his answers. Um he struck me as someone who was gonna be thoughtful and and um honest in his um uh opinions, and um I like the idea that he talked about um approaching applications it with with a fairness and an equity um involved with, you know, depending on the applicant, it doesn't matter if you're big or little, that everybody gets treated treated the same. So I I appreciated that about him, and I also think it's important to have a diverse set of opinions on the Planning Commission. I I don't think that we want somebody or all of our commissioners to think or act like we do. I mean, we're looking for them to to be open-minded and and look at things um from a critical eye, from an open mind, and and get their their viewpoint, because sometimes someone else's viewpoint that isn't the same as yours, you 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 might end up changing your mind, so I I think um he would bring that to the um to the commission.
Thank you. Uh so I'll offer uh my thoughts. Uh I do agree um with everyone that reappointing the um two uh existing uh planning commissioners, uh Maggie Ostrowski and Michael Cray is appropriate for all the reasons stated. And the learning curve and the contributions they can make with that background is uh really um relevant and certainly going forward uh with what the city is looking at for general plan update and housing element. It'll be important, so I totally support that. Um I have a little bit of a different question uh regarding uh Matt. Um I still am remembering where he was uh the last times he had came to to be interviewed. Um and it was so strongly um oriented towards San Jose and even his vocabulary and experiences um were very, very different. Um clearly, he answered some questions differently this evening. But I'm I'm not a hundred percent there, and I would like to offer one question, which I did bring up the last time we had a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Um our demographics are not good. Um we have only one woman on the commission. And it just seems like um we we don't have as much diversity of opinion. Um I I know Councilmember just mentioned, Bybee just mentioned how important that was, and I totally agree. I'm also concerned that we didn't have a good response to the Planning Commission out outreach. I I think part of it may be COVID, part of it may be um summer and school, I don't know. But we usually have five, four, five, six, even as many as nine applicants. And this time, we had to uh stretch it to get these four. Um so I I do not have have a concern if we leave the third position vacant and go out and try and get more applicants. Um uh I think it'll be easier in September. Uh it it can be just COVID and people aren't willing to to find the time because they don't have it. Um but um I I would like to have seen a broader, uh more diverse um applicant pool. So I don't know if anyone else shares that um and feels free. Vice Mayor Restnikov and then Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. So I I agree with you in that we've had bigger pools and nine for three or six for three, and sometimes none though. Um I I tend to think that we've we've extended this out. This is the pool we have. So I think it comes down to, are they qualified? So so Councilmember Landry, the answers are changing. I I I like to believe that they've evolved, not just changed to tell you what you wanna hear, because I think the first time, I believe, might have been within a year of moving. Six years later is a different situation, so I'm believing that he understands more of of Campbell versus San Jose. And it was an issue the first time, I think, for me voting. The second time, I think, had to do more with incumbents. And then the the only other comment I'll make is um Councilmember Lopez said it. He has the basic qualifications. That's that's the term he uses. I think you're right. Um there have been ones that I've voted for begrudgingly or voted against. More often than not, they've all done a pretty good job. We haven't had any really, what I'll call bad commissioners. We've had people, like others have said, I didn't like their votes, but they were doing their job. So um I think in that case, when we look at the pool we have, and we look at somebody who has incredible interest coming back and back and back, at the the question becomes, is he qualified? And I think so. And I'm willing to take that chance, and I think that some of this does take some time. Michael Cray is an example, very different than he was when he interviewed four years ago, very different. Um I think most of, most of the commissioners are. So I I'm okay moving forward. Would I like a different demographic, maybe? Um but we we can't open it up again and hope that we get four more that we can choose from. I think we decide if this person is qualified or not. I think he has the qualifications. He's shown the interest. He has the background, and I take him at his answers that he has a better understanding of Campbell now than he has in the past, so I'm willing to support him.
If I may just offer clarification, if uh to reopen, I would mean to reopen it for one, not three.
Oh, I I end up, no, I get that. When when we might get none or three or six. Um this was a little scary because absent the incumbents renewing, we didn't think we had two, right? I mean, we had maybe one incumbent, so this is worrisome. I don't know why it is. But I think, having been on the other, the committee for commissions for years, we had times when we got nine for Parks and Rec and times when we got none. So sometimes you just don't know. I'm I'm happy with the three.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez, I think you raised your hand.
Yeah, um I'm in large agreement with what the Vice Mayor just said. I'll start by saying, Mayor, that I totally agree on the need for diversity. I, it's 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 a major priority for for me. Um I I I would have loved to have nine applicants to consider, um but for me, when we talk about um holding one position open, that, and I I know this is not where any of this would be coming from, but it would feel to me a little bit like punishing one applicant because we we didn't have, you you know, a broader pool. Whereas I I do see that the qualifications are there, and I I can't imagine coming back and asking someone to reapply a fourth or or fifth time when they've already done, so I'm making them go through the process. Um that just doesn't um feel fair to me when um ag- again, I see that the qualifications is as being there. Um and so, well, you know, I I I agree, I I wish we would have had um more to to consider. Nothing against the that the ones who who did apply, but um just I always think that that's healthier for the process. Um I'm, I wouldn't be in favor of that at at this stage.
Thank you. Yeah, um. Yeah, I think, I think we on all our commissions, I think we've got to find a way in these difficult times to engage better with our communities. Um it's just the age and demographics and everything else of the Planning Commission doesn't reflect our community. And one of the most, the the central role of the Planning Commission is to represent the community. They listen to what staff has to say, but ultimately, they are the community's representative. And um Matt certainly adds um one demographic, but it still doesn't provide a balance. So I agree that he um he he's qualified, but is that the only criteria? And I just think that, and and I won't disagree with his appointment, but I think that we have to be thoughtful. The Planning Commission needs to represent the community as a whole. And um it hasn't had good demographics for a long time, and um it's it's just a concern to find that I think we have to work on as a community. Vice Mayor Restnikov and then Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, just a comment. I don't disagree with any of that, and at one point, I think like CIC went the other way. I think we had six women on CIC. Like, I think the issue is one of getting applications. So we need to address then, why are, you know, why are we not getting them? Although at times we are getting them, but why are we not doing it? What is our outreach? Where do we outreach? Um I don't think we can fix that by rejecting an applicant because we prefer something else, if he's qualified or she's qualified. I don't disagree with you. There's another discussion here of the whole process for every commission. Is it working or is it not working? Some years it does, it works very poorly. Some years it works phenomenally well, and I'm not sure staff could tell us what the difference was. And I don't know the difference, right? They'll tell you the outreach was identical, it just happened. Maybe that, maybe there's something there for us to discuss as a separate issue. I would like to do that separate from tonight.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Lopez, I think you have the final say, and then we will go to a vote.
Yeah, similarly, I I I don't wanna lose that thread. I'd love to um a- also come out of this and I don't know if it's reexamining the the process or adding on to it. Um I do think that's very important going forward, and and so I would be in support of looking at that.
Thank you. And uh I will uh be open to a motion from any council member.
I'll do that.
Council, Vice Mayor Restnikov?
My move is the uh City Council reappoint Maggie Ostrowski and Michael Cray to a four-year term and appoint Matt Kamkar also to a four-year term on the Pike Commission.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Restnikov. Is there a second?
All second.
A second from Councilmember Bybee? A second from councilmember Barbie. May we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, if I can hit my unmute button. Uh, councilmember Barbie.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Hi.
Mayor Givens.
Hi. Thank you and congratulations to all of our planning commissioners, new and returning. And we look forward to working closely with you as the general plan update and the housing element date. Update among many other things goes through uh our community. So thank you and uh, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.